And she too should be commended. NSTAR has been a part of this process in terms of the IVM program for the past four years. We've imposed, self-imposed voluntarily, a moratorium on treating because of concerns from the community. I remember the meeting. Nassau Regional High School, 2009, it was either late spring or early summer, rather passionate meeting there and the first time I saw Laura there. And I think it was a Monday night or a Tuesday night and we were scheduled to begin treatment on Thursday. So nobody would have thought we would pull the plug two days, three days prior. But given the concerns and speaking with the town managers, the focus was Orleans, Wellfleet, Eastham. We did. We heard the concern. We didn't fully understand it. Why don't we take a step back? And that step back from 2009 has led us to 2013, four years later. And in that time, we have availed ourselves of the scrutiny of joining an ad hoc committee put on by Barnstable County. Worked with the Cape Cod Commission, sat down in negotiations with Green Cape. And so I would just want to, I guess, chronicle where we've been over the past four years, give you a thumbnail sketch. And I'm going to read it to you if you don't mind. "NSTAR voluntarily imposed moratoriums on spraying herbicides on Cape Cod beginning in 2009 and annually through 2012 due to concerns expressed at a public meeting by the community. The primary concern was the Cape sole source aquifer and the perceived possibility of these herbicides leaching into the water table. In 2010, NSTAR agreed to serve on Barnstable County's risk analysis of vegetation management ad hoc committee, charged with looking at herbicide pesticide use overall, but with particular attention to NSTAR's IVM program. The committee included elected officials, Mass. Department of Agricultural Resources, Cranberry Growers Association, mosquito control, the Mass. Military Reservation, Green Cape, Concerned Citizens Against Herbicide Use on Cape Cod, the USDA, Cape Cod Landscape Association, the Cape Cod Commission, and more. Laura Kelly was also a part of that committee. After months of intensive meetings and presentations, the committee drafted a white paper and ultimately voted in support of the IVM program. Concurrent to NSTAR's involvement with the ad hoc committee, NSTAR engaged in negotiations with Green Cape. These negotiations were mediated by the president of the Environmental League of Massachusetts, George Backrack. In the end, NSTAR proposed a number of measures, including a reduction of herbicide use over time and the collaboration of a Cape-wide educational program on herbicide pesticide use with Green Cape. The Cape Cod Commission was to be a part of this collaboration." Unfortunately, the proposal was rejected, but I still have some hope that there's something that we can do. And Laura put, you know, put a finger on it, that there's hopefully something that we can, we can work on as we continue to move into the future.
Mr. Gowan, could you?
I'm sorry. Hopefully we can.
The board is your audience.
Work together. Sorry. "NSTAR partnered with the Cape Cod Commission in 2011. The Cape Cod Commission used AmeriCorps volunteers to assist towns in identifying wellheads along the rights-of-way due to perceived discrepancies in mapping. NSTAR purchased and supplied GPS units for the volunteers who canvassed the Cape's right-of-ways, assisting towns' records by providing a more accurate mapping of these wellheads." And to note, it is the towns' responsibility to cross-check NSTAR maps with their own. The maps are provided in NSTAR's yearly operational plan. It was expressed by some towns that the needed cross-checking was not being done because of various reasons. So that leads us to the present. Couple of months ago, August, NSTAR conducted a briefing, a press briefing at the Yarmouth Service Center. We announced that we are going to move forward with our IVM program. At that time, the impacted communities, there are eight on the Cape and three on the Vineyard, were communicated to the town administrators, town managers, apprising them of what was going on, as well as the environmental groups that we had been involved with. The yearly, yearly operational plan was mailed to impacted towns on August 5th of 2013. Those communities are Sandwich, Bourne, Felmath, Barnstable, Harwich, Chatham, Brewster, Tisbury, Edgar Town, and Oak Bluffs, Orleans, I don't know if I left one out. And the Department of Agricultural Resources posted the YOP in their environmental monitor a couple of days after that, August 7th, which officially begins the 45-day comment period to September 20th. And in mid-September last month, the DAR extended that 45-day comment period by an additional 45 days, giving all the opportunity to respond and comment further. The second comment period terminates on November 4th. I know Laura had mentioned that we gave that, that additional time, but that was mandated by the DAR. Currently, NSTAR is awaiting the DAR's decision on the yearly operational plan. We're in the midst of the comment period, so towns, environmental groups, and so forth are responding within that comment period. To note, we are a heavily regulated business. The state is one of the most heavily regulated in the country on pesticide use. That's a known fact. And to note, too, NSTAR uses less than 1% of all herbicide pesticide used on Cape Cod. This is public information and recently cited by the Cape Cod Commission in a draft report, which also cites the greater user, which is the citizen, the cranberry growers, golf courses, and more. And I, again, I appreciate the position and the passion from, from Green Cape and others who, who oppose what it is that we're doing. I know they feel as though that they're, that they're just in, in their position, but we do feel as though we know what we're doing. I'm not a scientist. I brought two arborists, two of our senior arborists at NSTAR here to, to field some questions, if there are questions. But we are, and this is countrywide, we are operating in knowing that this is the best management practice. And that's the label that the Integrated Vegetation Management Program has been given. We have environmental groups in support of the IVM program. We have pollinator groups that are in support of our maintenance program, our IVM program. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
On your timetable, you projected, could you tell us what you have done since 2009? You've told us what you didn't do, that the moratorium was put in place so you no longer used herbicide. I imagine you must have done something to control the vegetation.
Something to control it? Well, we've, we've done clear cutting. That's what we've done.
Right. In this town...
Last year, you did some clear cutting, which it concerns me to say no to herbicide because the kind of clear cutting that NSTAR did last year had this town furious and in an uproar and doesn't want to give NSTAR permission to do anything because of the horrible treatment of the vegetation, of the neighbors, of the entire town. I'm concerned about that. You talk about 1% use. You haven't used any herbicide in the past five years, so your percentage is going to be pretty low if you've been using zero. I mean, how is it you have even 1% use if you haven't been using any in Cape Cod?
This is, we have to apply to the Department of Agricultural Resources and to let them know what we're going to use. And just as cranberry growers do and so forth. And I can also bring up Bill Hayes, which I would like to...
So you're saying you projected it would only be 1%?
No, this would be known, known fact. It has to be registered with the Department of Agricultural Resources.
It can't be fact if it hasn't happened yet.
Okay.
So there's no...
If I could bring up Bill Hayes, he's our senior arborist, and he'd be happy to answer that for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
As Dennis stated, I'm Bill Hayes, Senior Arborist for Electric Transmission for NSTAR. I believe the study that, that came from, from the Cape Cod Commission was for the period of time that herbicides were applied on the Cape Cod. So it's not in the moratorium period, it's for the period before that when we were applying on the Cape.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Well, I think the first thing I would think about what you just told us was a lot of technical information. And I was waiting for you to say, "We have something other than a chemical pesticide to use," and I didn't hear it. I heard some political things. I heard what a lot of organizations you've talked to. I'd be very interested in knowing who the environmental group is that would agree with pesticides. But, but I didn't hear, I didn't hear you say how a situation, that if we don't want pesticides, it hasn't been decided, but if we didn't, what you would do about that. And what I really wrote all over this page is a lot of organizations, a lot of people you talked to, the fact that it's been a moratorium, what would you do if you couldn't use pesticides?
Okay. I'm going to use my left here, and I'm the Community Relations Rep., and this is our Senior Arborist. So I'm going to let him answer that question.
Wow.
So you're correct, there's a lot of political issues in that, and I think that's what this has boiled down to. The, the science behind it is well documented. It's in the manuals from, documented from DAR, the Vegetation Management Plan. This is the Vegetation Management Plan. It's not the, you know, the most exciting read, but it does have all that information to answer all your questions in here. That also went through scrutiny and boards and review. And on the panel that discussed this Vegetation Management Plan with us, there were representatives from all different types of communities, whether they be activists, or environmentalists, or academia, commercial, et cetera. So that's how the VMP gets reviewed for the scientific information that's in it. The yearly operational plan speaks to all the specific products we use and how we use them. You know, it talks about the low-volume foliar application, it talks about cut stump, it tells specifically which products are used, which are not. We do have choices, but that doesn't mean we use all five of them at the same time. And I think another thing that this speaks to is when we go down a right-of-way, we don't apply over and over and over again. We go down that right-of-way once, and then we may come back another three to five years. And so by, by design, reduce the use. Less chemical is used each time we go through that right-of-way. On the other hand, if we go through with mowers, you know, they're using petroleum products, whether it be gasoline, diesel, et cetera, each time we go through that, you know, the parties before us were correct that that keeps putting more and more sprouts, creating thicker and thicker targets that are going to reach our power lines. So the idea of a IVM program is mechanical control, chemical control, cultural control. And as you go through that cycle, you're reducing the stem density out there, less and less. As you go through with herbicide applications, there is less targets to apply because you've eliminated root systems, you've allowed the native species to invade that area and take control. That's the cultural control part of it. As far as, you know, I don't know if you want to call this an environmental group, but it's Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, and this is from Dr. French, Assistant Director. Although the focus of utility companies is on safe and efficient delivery of services to the consumer, many state-listed plants and animals and other declining species are increasingly dependent on early successional habitat conditions that results from careful right-of-way management. He goes on to say that, that many right-of-way managers combine mechanical management with spot applications of herbicides to effectively and efficiently manage problem vegetation and provide safe and reliable service to consumers. While mechanical vegetation management plays an important role, this technique alone is not always adequate, and in some situations can exacerbate problems created by invasive or worthy species. The same concerns hold true for the management of early successional habitat for state-listed species. Mechanical methods alone do not always achieve the diversity of habitat features, and these species require and therefore the targeted application of herbicides is often necessary for the creation and maintenance of certain early successional habitat features. In summary, the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program believes that the method of vegetation management developed by utility companies with the Department of Agricultural Resources and the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Oversight, including the targeted use of herbicides, are both environmentally sensitive and necessary to maintain key habitats. So I would say that's a fair endorsement of the IVM program. Did I answer your questions, ma'am?
Not at all.
Okay.
I will say, I am waiting to hear, how can you, you can accomplish what you need to do without pesticides that are eventually going to end up in our ponds. That's all I need to know. I need to know that of all the chemists and the scientists, and you're all working, why there isn't a product that can, can solve your problem and it does not harm our ponds?
And those are the products we're using, ma'am. So the materials that we're using them, they're, this isn't, remember, NSTAR is an end-user like yourselves, our end-users in this town using chemicals. We are regulated by the state, and they have come up, doctors, not arborists, they have come up with what products are safe and whether they're insensitive materials areas or not. So what does a sensitive material mean? Those are the only products we use that are listed for sensitive materials areas. That means we can go into certain wetland areas and use those products, as many other groups do, including the state. We can go into zone twos of water areas with those products. That's how confident the scientists are with this information. So we use that throughout our entire system. We can use other products that we don't have listed in our YOP. In the upland areas, we choose not to do that because if we keep it just to the sensitive materials, we, we use that throughout our entire system. We don't use those other products, which some may argue will have higher toxicity issues. So, you know, when you use equipment, chainsaws, that's gas and oil. When you use mowers, skidder buckets, bucket trucks, that's all petroleum-based, you know, fuel to, to make that equipment do the job out there. So those residuals are out in the field. So I'll point out to you one thing here on the, a Louisiana State University pesticides for proper perspective, some, some facts to help us keep toxic things in proper perspective. So toxicity is measured in LD-50. So the higher the number, the more toxic it is. Table sugar, 29,700. Aspirin, 1,000.
Stop you right there. Somebody have a phone going or something back there?
Yeah, something is.
Could you please silence that or leave the room? Who owns that?
Oh!
Thank you. I'm sorry. Please continue.
Thank you, sir. So the reason I'm actually putting these numbers out there, when you talk about, you know, toxicity of things, you have to put numbers to them. You can't just say it's safe or it isn't safe. So table sugar, 29,700, baking soda, 3,500, aspirin, 1,000, nicotine, 53, gasoline, 150, caffeine, 192. So the lower numbers, 192, caffeine, gasoline, nicotine, are more toxic than Roundup. Glyphosate. Glyphosate is 4,320. Now, these are just not my opinions, these are, you know, scientific facts. So it's just trying to put it in perspective. You know, one of the most toxic things in the environment is natural, Mother Nature, bacterium, botulinum. You know, a milligram of that pure toxin can kill 500 adults. Yet we use it for vanity purposes, Botox, et cetera. So it's a matter of moderation. So the dose makes the poison. Some things in very low doses won't do anything to you. At higher doses, they'll hurt you, and we use them every day. And so pesticides, to wrap your mind around that, is the same thing. When you, we're regulated, scientists have shown what is the proper mixes, what are the proper applications, where and what right-of-ways that we can use these products. And like many things we do every day, we trust professionals in their fields of expertise so that we can go about our day. And that's the same thing with our company. I as an arborist, Paul Sellers as a distribution arborist, we are professionals, but we're end-users. At the end of the day, Mass. Department of Agricultural Resources, US EPA, Department of Environmental Protection, those are the folks that we're trusting, that they understand the science behind that. In our, my 25 years of experience, has demonstrated to me that I trust those folks.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The previous speaker mentioned about how you spray. I don't know which one of you I would address. Is this on a sprayer truck, or is this backpack sprayers? Is it targeted spraying? Or is it, for lack of better terms, what Mr. Jones said, is it clear-cut spraying? Meaning that you would go down the entire right-of-way and, and spray everything?
So to answer that question, we're using backpacks, three-gallon backpacks. The mixes in there is about 8% mixed in water. So 8% of that total mixture is water, I'm sorry, chemical, including the surfactants adjuvants, besides the active ingredient chemicals. The remaining, approximately 98 to 99% is water. When you go down the right-of-way, you have a backpack, and you go up to the specific target. So if I may approach, you know, these, these microphones are the targets, and now here is all desirable species. We mowed it last year.
If you could carry the microphone with you, just, that way the folks at home can hear.
I always wanted to do this. So as I go through this right-of-way right here, I see these targets, and these are cherry, stems of cherry, and they're only this tall. Or they're pitch pine on the Cape, and they're only this tall because last year we mowed them, right? So this is when we want to target them. We don't want them to grow 8, 10, 12 feet tall. Because by law, we can't apply anything over 12 feet tall. So when we come up to this, I have a backpack on, I take the nozzle and I spray it like that. Go up to this target, the same thing. As I go through the right-of-way, that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for pine, cherry, oak, maple. I think most folks know what those are. So what are we also looking for? Viburnum, witch hazel, dogwood, hollies, those are all species that are native on the Cape also. So what happens is, I apply that, it might take three to four months before that plant is affected in order to kill it. It might be the next growing season when everything's sending to the merestems, to the growing points, and that chemical's uptaked into those growing points, the plant collapses. So what invades that? The grasses, the ferns, the viburnums, the blueberries. So you can see, next time I come, three to five years, you know, there's birds, there's animals, whatnot, there's wind, plants get seeded in. Now of these four, there's only two. And then in another three to five years, now there's only one. So you can see that by design, the use of pesticide is reduced because we keep eliminating those targets. Whereas if I come back every three to five years, these just keep multiplying, and I just keep mowing them down. So, you know, I understand, especially on transmission, when, you know, we go through a right-of-way, and we're clearing for any tree that could, within our easement boundary, hit those transmission lines, and we're mowing them, and we're cutting with big machines, and it looks devastating thereafter. After time, and it's, it's a time factor, you're seeing it at its worst. You know, we'd have to keep coming back and mowing that over and over and over again. So it's a fairly destructive event, necessary but destructive. Next time I come back with a mower, think about birds, animals, they're out in that right-of-way. Now, we can take precautions, but the fact of the matter is, when you're in a caged machine and you put someone out in front of you, there's only so many things that you can see as far as nesting and whatnot. So when I go through there with a herbicide, we're not disturbing those. They may run off, they may abandon their nest and come back to it, but we're not destroying that habitat for them.
When you mow, you're using your same illustration, are you just going after those things, or do you have to take the, the other low-lying vegetation at the same time?
So, no. So if I have blueberry right at the base of this stem, and up here is the foliage, overwhelmingly the top of the foliage is where the herbicide goes. If it goes past and it can't, down to the stem, there could be some spotting on the bottom. So right around the base of it, yes. But if I have blueberry where I'm standing, it's not affected. So now you have that sort of space where that blueberry bush can now invade it because that root's stem is gone now.
Though my question is, if we didn't use herbicides, pesticides, did we only mow? Are we mowing everything, including those, those trees, meaning the other blueberries and things of that nature? Is that, yes?
Yeah, so effectively, that's what we're doing because a mower, a go, whatever, and go, a go or a heat treatment is just another type of mowing. It doesn't do anything to the root system. So yes, you just keep destroying those same plants. Now, some things like blueberry do benefit from a certain amount of either fire or mowing or whatnot to invigorate them, but not repeatedly, over and over and over again.
All right. That's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. In your publication, we received on September 23rd, it's your notice about the comment period extension. You continually refer to herbicides. Does that mean you no longer use pesticides? Or that you just didn't include those in this communication?
So herbicides are under the umbrella of pesticides. So fungicides, you know, pesticides, insecticides, rodenticides, et cetera, are all under the umbrella of pesticides.
All right. Now, the, the other thing, too, is in your, in your communication, you talk about sensitive areas. And I'm assuming that those are areas under which there are drinking water wells. Is that what you refer to as a sensitive area?
Not necessarily, no. So sensitive areas is something from the state, so it's a term. It's not just, you know, there's blueberry bushes there or honeybees or something, that's not a sensitive area by definition. So sensitive areas would be wetland areas, it would be in water well areas. So for instance, under DAR, private wells are identified within 100 feet of our right-of-way. We will not apply within 50 feet. That is the law. Public water supplies, there's different classifications, up to 400 feet away from public water supply, so there's 100, 200, et cetera. We just go to 400. That way we keep it simple and don't try to delineate whether it's, you know, whatever type it is. So we go 400 feet away from that public water source. Where the sensitive areas come into play for some communities are zone twos, you know? So we are allowed by law to apply in zone twos, which is outside of that 400 feet, with the sensitive materials list, which we use throughout the entire right-of-way, not just in sensitive areas.
I mention that because I think for us, and I would probably say that for many towns on the Cape, is that all of the area on the Cape is sensitive because we have a sole source aquifer. And all of our drinking water comes from, comes from the ground. So whether it's somebody's drinking water well, or whether it's a zone of contribution, or whatever it is... or whatever it is, the entire Cape is a sensitive area because that's where all of our water comes from. And I wanted to mention too, that it amazes me in a certain way that the state and the towns, they actually mow all of the grasses that are but state highways, state roads, and the towns with town roads. And I realize that there's a different type of perhaps vegetation that's growing on the right-of-way. And I appreciate that. But in the last paragraph of the Cape Cod Commission's letter to you, their letter dated September 16th of this year, they said that while they understand your efforts in protecting the region's infrastructure, and the intent of your IBM program, your Vegetator Management Program, in order to provide more desirable plant species over the undesirable, thereby reducing the need for pesticide applications. I think the point is, what is your plan to actually reduce all of the undesirable vegetation or plants so that you don't have to apply pesticides at all? Is that a reasonable goal for you? Or are we gonna... See, I understand that we don't have much say in the matter because the use of the pesticides are approved by the feds and also by the state government. So we can't really tell you not to do it at the local level. But we can surely do what we can to encourage you to have a goal of not using pesticides in the nearest possible date. How could you accomplish that?
So, how are we gonna do that?
Yeah, how are you gonna do that?
How NSTAR is gonna do that, how, you know, Commonwealth is gonna do that, is shockingly by using herbicides. And the reason I say it that way is, again, the whole idea is to reduce the use, right? So, you know, by using herbicides, again, we're outcompeting those invasive species. That would be another thing that invades our areas when we mow, whether there be, you know, purple loosestrife, or Japanese knotweed, et cetera, right? So if we keep mowing it, and Japanese knotweed's a great example of it, we keep mowing that down, it comes back thicker and thicker and thicker. So you're actually perpetuating that noxious weed, or those invasive plants. When you use herbicides, you're controlling the root system of that plant, allowing the natives to invade that area. So in the end, that's how we're gonna reduce the use. We're never gonna go to zero using pesticides. If we keep mowing and mowing and mowing, that's gonna keep invading and create more of those target species that are undesirable to us, and the invasive species into that right-of-way. We were at that point not long ago on the Cape, where we've had success in doing that, right? In born. We went from a solid monoculture of pitch pine to native, warm-season grasses. It's fairly remarkable, you know? So that's the land steward part of our program. We're out here to provide safe and reliable power, access, comply with all regulations, right? One of the great benefits, whether you're a forester or an arborist, is, in the end, you're a land steward. And at the end, you're going to have that native habitat that you are bringing back at the expense of a monoculture of pitch pine.
Well, I realize too, that birds and animals also bring the undesirable species, and, you know, along with them, they deposit the seeds and all of that. But I guess my question for you is, can you tell us what the pesticide application level was, say, five years ago in Falmouth, to what it is today, or what you're planning to do? How much less pesticides have you used?
You know, we do have information on, and we have to do that by law, we need to keep it for at least three years, but we have that information on how much we apply the first time, how much we apply the second time. And it, again, it's going down. And so on certain rights-of-ways, if we have not been able to get back to them, we've had to go back and mow, and yet mow again, well, now we're back up at a higher level, and we're gonna have to apply, again with backpacks, to those plants. So there're gonna be more product out there per acre than there was, say, in 2002, okay? But we're gonna get back at that point, and say 2018, 19, where we're down at the much lower levels. Now, realize, we're already down at pretty small levels. We're talking about pints per acre. And when you try to imagine what an acre is, you know, pints is pretty small when you're using a backpack. I mean, we got a three-gallon backpack. That should tell you something, that you can't keep refilling that thing over and over again. So a person is going down that right-of-way, applying the microphones, right? And they keep on going. Well, they have a pony vehicle, an ATV, that comes up to those backpacks, put more pesticide into the mix, into the tank, and they keep on going. They do a right-of-way that's 13 miles long in two days. And when we go through and clear that, whether it be with harvesters, or mowers, or pruners, we're here for months. So that should intuitively say, you know, there's less and less targets out there to apply, and we're using three-gallon backpack mix. There's less being used.
Well, yeah, if I may, and this is my last comment. That's encouraging, but it's really not good enough. And we're now in the process of trying to get all of our residents educated and knowledgeable about the use of fertilizers, and the problems that fertilizers cause to our groundwater. And pesticides are part of fertilizers. So I would really like to see NSTAR work on a program to absolutely define a point at which you could, through other means, eliminate the use of pesticides altogether. We, I think we have to do everything we can to protect our drinking water. And I don't think even 1% is acceptable.
So do appreciate that, you know, and, you know, Cape Cod Commission going after that is outstanding. So, you know, that 80% roughly of pesticides used by homeowners, you know, a great place to start. And I think I heard it tonight, someone talking about storm drain runoff, outstanding, you know? You know, a lot of us live in this community. We may be NSTAR or Northeast Utilities, but we all live here. So, I mean, none of us wants our groundwater, our drinking water, to be harmed. I don't know anybody who would say that, you know? So I think what we're doing is a model to educate those folks. So a lot of those folks, they're certainly not licensed. If you go to the store, and you're using Brush Begone to control poison ivy, which is trical there, more is better to some. With us, we've gone through the training, we're licensed, we're licensed by the state, we've continuing education credits, and we have resources to know what we're doing, and go out. And the whole idea of IPM, Integrated Pest Management, Integrated Vegetation Management, is to reduce the use of pesticides. So we're already the model for that, best management practices, and that can help in the education process to the homeowner, who's the overwhelming user of pesticides.
In looking at the YOP, is it only two right-of-ways that in Falmouth is planned to be, the pesticides, the herbicides planned to be used? Row 314 and Row 304, I think?
There are two distribution lines, and Paul Sellers, our senior arborist, also handles the distribution of those IBM applications.
Paul Sellers, senior arborist, distribution vegetation for NSTAR. And it's two right-of-ways. The first is the 314 right-of-way, which is at the beginning of Sandwich Road, kind of comes across the Soars, behind the Soars Flower Farm back there. Goes down all the way to Carriage Shop Road, crosses down in the Bittersweet area neighborhood, goes through the Tony Andrews Farm, crosses, is that Turner Road or John Parker at that point? And then goes, parallels kind of Sandwich Road, terminates at Brook Hill Road. The other right-of-way is the 304 right-of-way, which comes out of Stevens Street, our substation, goes down the road and then jumps into the, off the road, and runs up to Falmouth Hospital, and then parallels the bike path. And that follows a bike path all the way down to Elm Road, where we have a substation there. Both of these right-of-ways, incidentally, have been treated in the past.
One last question. The Town of Falmouth has a fertilizer application bylaw that was accepted by the state. And there's a period of time that we want, we do not allow fertilizer, I believe it's March 1st to October the 30th. When would you be doing this treatment? What time of the year?
We'll be starting applications in the fall.
Would you be able to abide by that timing of that? To be able to go in...
What was it, May?
I believe you can't apply from March the 15th to October the 15th, something like that.
It's October to March.
October to March. So the period would be October to March that you could apply?
So the short answer would be no, because we're regulated by the state, 333 CMR 11. So we do not fall under that bylaw for fertilizer.
I'm asking if you could voluntarily do it during that period of time, from October till March?
No, sir. Because I mean, you know, the majority of it is low-volume foliage, so it would be on the foliage of the plants. So certainly from that time period, most of the foliage is no longer on those plants. So then it would be ineffective.
It's the exact opposite. You can't do it from October to March in the fertilizer. March to October is when you're allowed to apply the fertilizer.
Right, March till October. Okay, I had the dates wrong. So you could do it in that other period of time, from March till October?
Yeah, they're really two totally different applications. They're not one in the same. So they really, the modes of action and whatnot do not marry up. So that's why, you know, when we go to NSTAR, it's utility right-of-way category, you know, some of the same sort of products could be used in another right-of-way category, or another category of application, you know, whether you're injecting trees for, you know, Dutch elm disease, or you're doing gall WASP or whatever, you fall under a different category. You know, if you're, you know, putting chemicals in a water treatment facility, or you're doing, you know, glyphosate treatment on a school property, or whatever you're doing, those are all separate categories and fall under different parts of the pesticide program.
My understanding, I believe the reason March to October, and you know this better than I, is for nutrients, you want them to be used up by the plants, as opposed to getting into the waters quickly. What you're doing is very different. And the other reason was, for runoff, it's more likely to happen during the winter months.
Right, so fertilizers mostly are applied either by granular rotary spreader onto the ground, or through a foliar application with a hose onto the grass, which is also on the ground. So, you know, we're up top on the foliage, we're not putting it down on the ground.
Last question, so we're gonna move this along?
Just very quickly, I would like to say that in the conversation and listening to you, there are some very bright minds I've been listening to. And would you please say to NSTAR to have some type of a resolution that it's not pesticides that is coming into our town? Because I think you can do it. And then we won't have that in our groundwater, and we won't have it in our ponds. And I think you're very bright people, and you can figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not gonna take public comment on this this evening. This was for the board's edification, to hear both sides of this particular issue, and to decide, for the board to decide if it wanted to take any action. I would like to take a moment and say a few things. I was on the Conservation Commission here in town for four years, and I don't know if the board is aware of it, but our own Conservation Commission, and I was a part of some of these decisions, actually approved the use of pesticides in wetlands in order to control certain invasive species. The reality is, and while it's a wonderful idea that we could say, okay, we're gonna get rid of all the pesticides and call it a day, the reality is that managing vegetation is not as easy as saying there's something else out there. I would, I'm gonna venture to guess, probably a very good educated guess, that if there was something else out there that was better than this plan, we'd be seeing it already. There are costs associated with doing this. NSTAR is a public utility that is very heavily regulated by this state. They cannot set their rates without permission from the state. They cannot do things such as apply herbicides without permission from the state. If there was a way of doing this cheaper and more efficiently, I'm sure they would be coming to us and asking, and telling us about it. The reality is that it doesn't exist. And I can tell you from experience on the Conservation Commission, that yes, pesticides sometimes have to be used. I'd also like to point out to the board that we spent an hour listening to these presentations tonight. And while I appreciate the desire of some members of this board to hear this information, I'd like to point out the fact that whatever we do or say here tonight is gonna have absolutely no impact on what NSTAR does. We cannot regulate NSTAR. We have no jurisdiction whatsoever over their use of pesticides in the Town of Falmouth. This is something that is regulated by the state, it is regulated by the EPA. And quite frankly, to be spending an hour of our time doing this is, in my opinion, a waste of our time. And if you folks would like us to continue to put these sorts of items on the agenda, that's all well and good, but we're gonna be spending a lot of time, a lot of hours, doing things which are gonna do nothing for the people of Falmouth. I would suggest that if we want to accomplish something here, that we can encourage the people of Falmouth to reach out to, not NSTAR, but to the state. Because it is really the state that regulates the situation. They've said it several times tonight, folks, the Department of Agricultural Resources is the controlling authority here. The EPA approves the use of pesticides, herbicides, and other chemicals across the country. Those are the organizations that have to be reached. We're not gonna be able to get our work done if we spend hours and hours listening to presentations from organizations, asking us to do things that quite frankly are not gonna be given any attention by the state. That's my two cents in this situation.
I'd like to make a motion.
By all means.
Okay, I am using this from one of our other towns on the Cape, to make a motion that NSTAR abandon its current plan to use herbicides along the rights-of-ways on Cape Cod, and to commit to a no-spray pesticide-free policy of the vegetation management on Cape Cod and the island.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Murphy?
I don't wanna belabor the point, but the bottom line is, is we have some alternatives here. We can continue to clear cut, we surely know what that has done to folks in this community. It has outraged folks. Or we can just merely try to take a conservative approach and use herbicides on the species that could potentially put folks in this community out of power. I don't have to remind this board what happened last winter in that devastating storm, how many days so many folks were out of power, how much grief that cost our citizens. We do have some responsibility here on this board to be able to do what we can within the means we can. Are we ever going to eliminate all of the risk in anything we do? No. There are no guarantees in this world, except death. And I've said that before, folks. The bottom line is, we can't guarantee that herbicides aren't gonna cause some damage. But I'm sure as the progression moves forward, and science moves forward, we may come up with another alternative. But in the interim, I think it's important that we take aggressive action at only the species that are invasive, only the species that are causing some problems. And the gentleman's right, for those of us who have a yard, occasionally we have to use an herbicide. And in that case, that's as simple as it is. But I don't doubt that there may be some minimal risk, but I don't think that that's an issue that we need to take that much of a step. I think they know. I think NSTAR knows, that if they come up with a better solution to this problem, they're gonna come, they're gonna use that solution. So that's my concern.
I'm very concerned about pesticides, herbicides, any fertilizer being put in our water. But I have great faith in Mr. Sellers, and I'm glad that he's a local representative who can be helping NSTAR do their best to take care of the Town of Falmouth.
Anyone else? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion does not carry, vote three to two.